Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Reckon be the Liberty County Board of Commissioners, Mr. Brown, to meet him at property exercise?
Yes, sir, it has.
..........................................
Good evening, Commissioners, and all those that are in attendance, and great Chairman, can we just bow our heads for a moment? Most gracious in heaven, Father, we are so thankful and honored on today for so many wonderful blessings that you bestowed upon us. And on this evening, on this election evening, we ask that you would just continue to keep these leaders, their hearts and minds stayed upon you and the things that are concerning us in this community, that they would be able to take care of home, even in the midst of turmoil all around us. We thank you for the wisdom that you're giving them, the insight that you're giving them, even as I speak now, God. We thank you for your goodness and your mercy and how you've blessed Richard LaCounta, Liberty County native, and how you're going to continue, ask that you would continue to keep him and watch over him, and bless all of us on this evening. And we thank you for this and all things, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Hayes. Thank you for all you do for our community. And we all are grateful for so many things, but certainly grateful that Richard is doing well, and if the report's accurate, that he's been released from the hospital, so we're happy to hear that. Anytime you can hit a car or motorcycle and be hit by two cars and still survive, that's a miracle in itself, so we're thankful to the hand of God that was upon his life and other lives who we may not know, so we thank for all those things, so. Just wanted to express that, because he represents Liberty County so, so very well. All right, the minutes from October, we need our approval.
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minute as they were presented.
Second.
Motion, secondly, we approve the minutes from the month of October. Motion, Commissioner Stevens, Second Commissioner, and Thrift. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Thank you, the minutes are approved. Public hearing, 2020 millage, Ms. Kim McGlaughlin. This is our second hearing, while she comes, let me give her an intro. Did one today, and after some comments that were made, I think I need to make a general statement that, to the general public, that you may or may not know, that before we ever get to this time, a lot of work has been done. A lot of work has been done. A lot of shopping with a pencil has been done, reviews and cutbacks, those things have already taken place. And even in this period, there are still times to make adjustments if we have to, but just don't think that we arbitrarily, or in one session, got to this point, that's just would not be the truth. And know this from me, no elected person that I've met yet wants to raise taxes is not the desire of any elected person to raise taxes. Do we have to sometime? Yes, based on services we provide, and guess what? Services come with their what? The cost. Whether it be fire protection, or whether it be salaries for policemen, all those things cost, because those folk have to be paid for their services too, and the service is not free. And the state of Georgia don't allow certain means for income. Property taxes is the one, of course, then we use some fines and forfeitures to help. And then when we can get grants, we do that too. We explore every avenue of funding so that it has the least impact on our citizens. So I had to say that as opening statement, so people will kind of have an idea of what goes on, how we come to conclusion, and what goes on before we ever get to this point.
That's right.
All right.
That's right. Let me turn down one light.
Mr. Chairman, do we need to go on a public hearing?
Joey, are we considered a public hearing?
You're fine.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Walton.
Okay, so we're here to present the proposed 2020 millage rate. And this first slide that you see here illustrates the gross digest growth, the growth in the exemptions, and what you're left with as the net digest. I put this up here so that you could see from 2010 to 2020, we've had growth that's gone up and down a couple of years, in 2012 and 2015, where we've actually had negative growth, and we'll talk about how that can happen in a little bit. But the last few years, at least from 2017 to 2020, we've been somewhere around 1.7% to 3.8% in the gross digest, which is decent growth. When you isolate just the exemptions, you get a clearer picture of what they're doing. From 2010 to 2020, you can see their growth rate, and it's been as high as 15% sometimes, and as low as 3%. And in the last few years, it's hovering between 3%, up as high as 7.6%, and this year, 6.6%, almost 6.7%. So the growth in the exemptions is higher than the growth in the gross digest. These are those exemptions. Liberty County is an exemption-rich county. We do provide a lot of exemptions for a lot of different things. It's interesting to note, out of all of the exemptions, and there's 306, almost $307 million in exemptions this year, two of those exemptions, the free port and the disabled veterans, make up about 74% of your total exemptions. So when you look at this, you can look from last year to this year, from 2019 to 2020, almost all of them decreased, except for the two largest, the disabled veterans and the free port, to where we had a net increase of $19 million in exemptions. That's a lot of money, in tax dollars, that total exemptions are around $5 million. And I know you have to weigh that, because you have to have those type of exemptions in order to draw industry here, to bring growth, to bring jobs, and that sort of thing. But the offset is that that money is then made up by the taxpayers. This illustrates what the millage rate has done. The county has two millage rates. We have a millage rate for the citizens of Heinsville, and we have a millage rate for everybody else, in the unincorporated and all the other cities. So you can see, the top graph shows the millage rate for the city of Heinsville. Back in 2010, it was an 11.3, it held kind of steady for a couple of years, dropped for a couple of years, went up, held steady for about three years, went up again, back down. Last year, it was 14.44, this year, we're proposing 14.8, and that again is the county millage rate for the city of Heinsville. Everyone else in the unincorporated area and the other smaller municipalities, again from 2010 to 2020, we can see where we started at 11.98, we went up a little bit, went up again, dropped back down. Last year, we were at 15.3, and this year, we are at 16.3. I want to stop here and remind everybody, it's the same thing you mentioned this just a minute ago, Mr. Chairman, the millage rate is a direct reflection of what your budget does. And back in 2002, when I first started, we had a general fund budget of 11.5 million, 11.5 million. Our budget this year is over 35 million. So while there are other revenues that continue to increase, just like you said, the additional services, the additional personnel, the additional costs of those supplies and those benefits continue to increase as we add to our workforce, the biggest thing in this year's budget, as we've talked about before, was the added full-time firefighters, adding 18 full-time firefighters this year. We've been talking about countywide fire protection for a few years, we've gone back and forth on how to actually cover that cost, and this board has made the determination that fire service is an essential service, and it's going to be part of the general fund. And as such, we cover it through the use of general fund revenues. The biggest one, as you mentioned, being property tax. Now, we receive local option sales tax, we receive fines and forfeitures, but the largest portion of our revenues are property tax. So this chart, I really like this chart, because it shows you the difference between the real growth and the reassessed growth. So in any given year, there's two types of increases in the digest. You can have real growth, which means those are properties and personal property and real property that comes onto the digest that's never been on the digest before. You can also have reassessed growth, where you revalue something that's already there, and reassessed growth can be positive or negative. So this chart shows you in any given year, the real growth in the green and the reassessed growth in the yellow. So you can see there were two significant years, 2011 and 2015, where we had so much negative revaluation of certain properties, we had a net decrease in our digest for that year. And any year where you have a negative real growth means something came off the digest. Let me talk to you about Service Delivery Strategies Act, House Bill 489. This is a House bill that requires any county government to not double tax a citizen. So if I'm a citizen of Heinsville, I should not have to pay for the same service twice, once on my city bill, once on my county tax bill. So there are certain services where the city of Heinsville contributes, as well as the county contributes. So for instance, the library, LCPC, the Chamber of Commerce, fire protection, so as a city of Heinsville resident, I should not have to pay for those services twice. So what we do is we roll back the millage rate for those specific services, so the city of Heinsville residents get a reduced millage rate. And that reduced millage rate equals the amount of revenue equal to a millage that it takes for those specific services. And again, here are examples of those duplicated services, fire protection, building inspections, mosquito control, Rite Army Airfield, these are all services that the county and the city both provides. This gives you an overall picture of what we anticipate generating. So if you take the unincorporated digest, which is 414 million, and you apply the millage rate of 16.3, you'll generate tax revenue of about $6.7 million. The unincorporated cities, all the other municipalities, is about 261 million, at a millage rate of 6.3, will generate about 4.2, almost 4.3 million. The Heinsville digest is 650 million. If we apply a millage rate of 14.8, we're going to generate 9.6 million. Collectively, we will generate 20 million, $20,640,000 in tax revenue. That's at 100%. And again, you see the difference between these two millage rates are about 1.5 mils, which is about 95% of the actual rollback. So we're almost at 100%. Our general fund budget, as I mentioned earlier, is 35.7 million. If I back out all of the other revenue line items, to include the cares money that we did receive, you're left with funding $19.7 million through property tax. If we adjust the total tax revenue for a 96% collection rate, which is a pretty reasonable rate, we'll generate 19.8 million. That leaves us with a surplus of about 31,000. If we actually collect 95% of the taxes, we will have a deficit of about 174,000. If we collect 97% of the taxes, we'll have a surplus of a little more than 200,000. So when you talk about a $35 million budget, all three of those numbers are real close. So we feel like this is as good as we're going to get, as close as we're going to get with not overtaxing for what we have to provide. This gives you an actual example of the dollars, of the actual tax dollars. So if you lived in the unincorporated area or one of the other smaller municipalities last year, if you had a home valued at 150,000, the taxable value is 60,000, with the millage rate of 15.3, you paid $918 in county tax. This doesn't take into consideration any exemptions that a property owner might have. This year, that same $150,000 house would generate $978 in property tax for an increase of $60. That's about a 6.5% increase in property tax. In Heinsville, that $150,000 home last year at 14.44 mils generated $866 in tax revenue. This year, at the proposed rate of 14.8, will generate $888 for an additional tax of $22, about 2.5%. That is what I have, unless anybody has any specific questions for me, or questions or comments.
Commissioners, do you have comments? Kim, go back to the page that shows the surplus slide. I made the comment this afternoon, that that's not very much.
No, that's not very much wiggle room. And in the past few years, Mr. Jones has come in somewhere right around 96 and 97%. So we feel pretty good about this. Hopefully, barring no significant negative impacts of COVID, he will be able to continue to collect at that rate the initial year, but again, there is no guarantee.
Just for public information, what we like to have is, when it comes to fund balance, four and a half months, am I right?
We like to stay anywhere between three and seven months. If we get below three months, we really start to tighten the belt. If we get over seven months, we use that money as a one-time reduction for something. But yes, we try and stay between three and seven months.
And I'm just calling it the rainy day fund. Or in your personal home, they call it emergency fund. Everybody should have, what did it say, three to six months, you know, to live off of in case things go bad? So that's our money to use in case things go bad.
And we've had to before.
And in fact, I remember when we first came on, we had a line of credit, didn't we?
It was depleted, yes, certainly. Actually, when you think about it, that is the money you live off of during your lean time every year, and that's the reason of three to seven-month balance, because when you stop collecting property taxes, you still have to function. And so you get into that period of time from about, really from about April through October, November, when you have to have that money sitting there to run your operations, because your high revenue sources have already been received. And so it's, you put the money in savings, so to speak, and then you're going to draw out of that savings to pay the bills during this month when the revenue's down.
Okay. So, you know, 31, once again, is not a lot. I'm hoping it will be 97%.
It would be nice, but there is no cushion. It's not like we're trying to generate anything more than we absolutely need to cover the budget that you adopted in June. That includes the 18 firefighters.
Turn that to that other slide, Kim, the one we were just at, the last one, where you were showing the, yeah, the very la, there you go.
That one.
So what we're looking at in the unincorporated areas, on your $150,000 house for 2020, you're going to have an increase of how much money?
About $60.
So you're looking at 5, 50, I was trying to figure here, the folks that's going to have fire protection in the county now, and what we, you know, we were looking at insurance, and what it was costing a homeowner for insurance because of the, what the fire rating was.
Right.
So it looks to me like we're headed in a direction that we're going to actually be able to help. I don't know what ours is, that's in the city, I don't know what my insurance is versus the ones that's in the county, but it looks like we're headed in the right direction to have full-time firefighters, which is also going to increase or decrease their insurance, fire insurance on their dwellings, so.
Right.
And it's a small price to pay for.
About $5 a month.
Right.
And let me go ahead, and it's a good place to interject, because the general public may not know, so those of you who are watching us on Facebook, until very recently, there are people in Liberty County, Georgia, who will call 911 for a fire emergency, and there will be no one to respond.
That's correct.
That's right.
No one to respond.
Right. We had been living off of volunteer firefighters for a long time, and if those volunteers are working, they're not able to respond, and, yeah, it was happening for a while, to the point where you decided it was time to take action.
I'm pleased we did.
Couple of quick notes, too. I think when we adopted the budget this year, that actual cost we projected internally was going to be about a mil and a half.
Yes, we did.
To carry that. So the good news is, because of some reassessment and some natural growth, that is not, has not had to go that high. The other side of that, too, is that now we are providing the full-time coverage with full-time folks that are of assistance, even the city of Heinsville sometimes, where we've had to run some backup and vice versa. So it's just the load has gotten so heavy there for emergency responding that, you know, it was needed.
Commissioners, any comments from you? I'm going to open it up to the audience. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody from the audience that has a question about what we presented, or a comment about what we presented? We'd be happy to try to clear it up.
Anything that's come through on the Facebook?
No, sir, not so far.
All right, all right.
Wow.
This is where we are, and there's one more opportunity on November 19th at our regular meeting.
Right. November 19th, we'll have one more public hearing, and you will formally adopt this and all of the other combined millage rates for the Board of Education, the Development Authority, the Hospital Authority.
And should the public like to, even after this, they can call in, speak to Mr. Brown or you, Ms. McGlaughlin, and get any questions answered.
Absolutely.
Yes, or come up to Facebook, and we'll monitor that also.
That they may have.
I believe you mentioned that this would be, that this would stay on there so that people could look at this and share this. Okay.
All righty, thank you so much.
I have. Thank you.
Thank you, all right. Proclamation, America Recycles Day, Ms. Karen Bell. And while she's coming, we also send out condolences out to the family of Mr. Dave Sapp that served Keep Liberty Beautiful for so many years. We honor his memory and his service to Liberty County.
Have a name. Thanks for that. Now you've got me thinking about him.
Sorry.
But he, it always brings a smile, because Dave was a big supporter of Keep Liberty Beautiful and Liberty County. And if you, someone made the comment today at a meeting, that he had like four pages of organization that he donated to, $100 or whatever, four pages. So he was a very generous man, also. My name is Dr. Karen Bell, and I'm here with our Advisory Board Chair, Willa Lewis. That's her underneath that mask.
Hey, she looks so young, man.
And we're, you thought she was our new hire. And we're here from Keep Liberty Beautiful to talk about America Recycles Day. America Recycles Day is a baby of Keep America Beautiful. And you may hear of Keep America Beautiful, but right now, they are worldwide. So this is initiative that's going worldwide. We are participating with countries and communities worldwide. And it's just a way to make our community aware about recycling, what you can do, what you can recycle, and where you can recycle. So one of the main things we're doing is asking you to do a pledge. And that pledge is asking you to learn, learn, like I just said, what you can recycle and where you can recycle here in Liberty County. Then act. Once you learn, you got to act, right? So we're going to ask you to act, actually start recycling, or recycling more if you already recycle. I always hear that, already recycle, or what else can you recycle? And then share. Don't keep it to yourself, don't keep the information to yourself, actually go out and share it with your coworkers, your family, your friends, your church, or your business. And then the last step is to take a pledge. So due to COVID, we usually go out, and we still have a working board day, which would be the 13th of November, but we'll be in the drive-throughs handing out these little pledges. Before they would sign it and get the information, now we have little scans where they would scan it and take the pledge on their phone. So that's one way we can stay safe. Through November, we are having our recycling fair, or recycling, so you can bring all your household items there to either Midway Community Complex, or Heinsville Health Department, or Wautaiville City Hall. And for the first time, I am pleased to announce that we will have a shred day in Midway. We have not had one. It's always been in Heinsville or Wautaiville, because our budget, no, I'm just kidding. It is expensive. I know, it is expensive, but it was always twice a year. We have had four so far, and that's because of our partnership with Savannah Shredding Company. They have partnered with us, and now we're able to have it more often, maybe able to have it at every recycling fair, or at a big cleanup, like we did with Riceboro. Riceboro was the first time they had theirs shredded day because of Rivers Alive. All right, that's all I have to say, sir. We have brought some lovely recycling bags, if you don't have one, or if you have it, you can still take it and pass it on and share it. Inside there, you'll also find your calendar for 2021, a pen, and more information that you can give out.
When do you all, when do you all rest?
Well, that's one good thing, that for, because of the COVID, we have not had the chance to stop, or said, some keep whatever had to stop and could not work, but we were able to keep on with the creativity of our staff and our board to make sure that Keep Liberty Beautiful continue on doing the work that it does.
Thank you for what you do. Let me throw this in real quickly. We were with a potential industrial client at an Development Authority meeting, and we had a discussion, and then we wanted to discuss some things among ourselves, we asked them to leave, and they did leave, and they came back in about an hour. And we said, what'd you guys do? He said, we were just riding around looking at your town. So people do look at you.
Yeah. That's good.
And they were very impressed with our community.
Great.
So we can't let up on, you know, the gateways, Commissioner, we can't let up on that. We got to, in fact, let me go throw it out now, I think we need to, this next plaza is going to be split so many ways, but we talked about those gateway signs, how many years ago?
Yeah.
In a while. But we need to make that happen. Those guys said, we ride around and look at your community. But they did bring back a good report.
Good.
So I'm happy to, but I don't want us to let up on that, so we got to make sure that.
And we are, with our cleanups, we are doing them, but there are smaller groups and staggered check-in, and that's, I think, one way we're able to do it and make sure that we stay safe. And you mentioned Dave. We are looking at the park that, across from McDonald's, that lot, we're looking at cleaning that up with the owner, actually maybe putting a sign there that says, hi, welcome to Heinsboro, or something. He has someone designing it and dedicating it to Dave Sapp, too.
Really?
So it'd be something that other community groups can come together, work on, and make sure that it's a nice park with a bench and things like that, and they could still do the, the church can still do their, the things that they do there, but it'd be nice. Have you ever looked at, Martin Luther King is a gateway to our downtown. And we tried to do some grants, but we got one to help out with the owner, and hopefully with other organizations chipping in, that we can make that something we all are Liberty County proud of.
I don't know, things have changed a little bit, but at one time, a certain company that works, somebody over there worked with, used to do some community stuff, I don't know where that, what they allowed to do.
We're working on the plan right now, so.
You might want to just call him and say.
I can say, his group do come out every time we have a cleanup or need something, he has someone on our board that is very active, Joey. We appreciate you giving him the opportunity to be on there. And your guys was out there cleaning up 196, they picked up 300 pounds of trash on Saturday alone, by themselves.
They put out 200 pounds Friday night, that's why.
Okay, well, they picked that up and one more. But we do appreciate, they are always small and helpful, so we appreciate that, sir.
Thank you, thank you, ESG.
Yeah.
All right, proclamation, Mr. Brown's going to read it for us.
This is a proclamation for America Recycles Day in Liberty County. Each year, the United States generates more than 258 million tons of municipal solid waste, that's more than four pounds per person per day. According to the Environmental Protection Agency, our nation has reached an overall recycling rate of 34.6%. Each year, our national recycling rate sends 89 million tons of material to a useful second life instead of the landfill, saves the same amount of energy consumed by over 10 million U.S. households in a year, avoids greenhouse gas emissions equivalent to removing more than 38 million cars from our roads, generates 757,000 jobs and 36.6 billion in wages, but much more can be done. Whereas, to focus the nation's attention on the importance of recycling businesses, industries, government agencies, nonprofit organizations, and individuals have joined together to celebrate America Recycles Day, and are encouraging friends, neighbors, and coworkers to pledge to learn more about recycling options in their community and commit to rec... commit to recycle more materials every day of the year. Whereas, participating in America Recycles Day 2020 is one way citizens can help raise awareness about the economic and environmental benefits of reducing waste by reusing, recycling, and buying recycled content products. Whereas, Liberty County, Georgia leaders can also use this as an opportunity to spread the word about the excellent recycling programs that have been established, the growth of markets for recyclable materials, and the importance of buying and job-creating recycled products. Now therefore, be it resolved by Donald L. Lovett, that Sunday, November fifteenth, 2020, it's hereby proclaimed as America Recycles Day in Liberty County, Georgia, resolved this third day of November, 2020.
If you all would make your way this way, please, we'll present and give you your codec moment there. Y'all in the center, Commissioners, if you were feeling around. Get this done quickly. Y'all come, come, come on up.
One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Can't see you smiling.
You can see it up here, you know.
That's why. It's all in the hair.
She got that hair down.
All right. Thank you, ladies. Appreciate all you do. LCPC, Ms. Neve Gandhi, rezoning.
We're not taking no action tonight.
Public hearing, chair, tenement motion to go into public hearing. Second. All in favor, we're now in public hearing, sir, for rezoning.
We're not doing any rezoning tonight, is it?
So, our first rezoning is for Mr. Pat Bowen, you may know him.
We know him.
He's already on his way out. So, this is a rezoning petition to rezonate property on North Coastal Highway from A1 Agricultural to B2 Commercial. Property's three acres, more or less, further described as parcel 234-8. Property's intended for use as mini-storage and is located in District Four.
Which district?
District Four.
There's no one here to represent that area.
Y'all have to pick up the slack, then.
We do.
We will.
I'll show you where this is on the map in a moment, but here's our legal ad and our sign. So, you can see the, I think this is the Abundant Life Church right down here. Here's the intersection with Leora Kofur, and there's the edge of the county. This is this square property right there. We'll get a little zoom in on it here. And there's another commercial operation right across the street here. So, as I said, it's zoned A1 currently, as is all this, but across the street, we have a good bit of B2 zoning right there, which is why we're recommending approval on it. So, our staff report, Comprehensive Plan has designated this parcel for forestry and agricultural use, but the parcel is abutting other commercial property. There are no homes or developments nearby that would be affected by commercial zoning here. There are possible wetlands in the rear of the property, so the site will need to be delineated before constructing anything. And most of the parcel is not in the flood zone. However, a portion of the back of the parcel is in Flood Zone A. It's kind of a tiny corner, but we are recommending approval with standard and special conditions for this, with our one special condition being that the applicant must delineate the wetlands of this property before construction begins. And that was recommended by the Planning Commission. All right, any questions?
Any questions with Mr. Gandhi? Is the petitioner here, sir?
Uh, he's over there, I think.
He left the room.
The petitioner.
Yeah, that's him.
That's him? No wonder he left the room. He didn't leave the building.
We got you on the other side now. Would you state your name, sir? State your name.
All right, just a little overview, sir, of what's going on. I think we heard it.
Well, we plan on putting storage units there. Nice storage units, two stories, climate-controlled.
Two stories?
Yeah.
Really?
Okay. Yeah. It's actually cheaper to go up than it is. That's where, that's the way they're building most storage units now.
I'm gonna say, do we have two stories in Liberty County now?
Yeah, they put an elevator in.
Really? Storage unit?
Yeah.
Wow, wow.
It's cheaper to build a house.
You go in first class. All right, was there any opposition?
No, we had a few calls asking that everyone was on board with it.
Wonder what was going on, and I did the same thing, and you see a yellow sign going up to make your, ask questions, okay? All right, all right. Let's see, since this is yours, you can't make the motion?
No, Ms. Karen. Chairman, I make that motion that we approve the storage for Mr. Pat Bowens in District Four.
Motion, second, we approve the rezoning as presented by Ms. Gandhi for this storage unit project. Good to have business going on in Liberty County, and under corporate Liberty County. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, raise your right hand, please. For the polls. Prove, sir.
I got a question for Mr. Mr. Will this be the first one with the two?
Two stories?
No, I think they got some here and I'm.
Really? Two stories?
I haven't seen any of those.
I haven't seen any either. Eighty-four. Is that two stories?
Oh, yeah, it's a very small one. You're right. By the old Liberty Crossroads.
Uh-huh, right in there, okay.
Sir, we just need to go back.
So, the next one says, "Setback here in public," setback?
We don't need, we don't need to be.
We don't need it, all right. Chair, tenement motion to go out of public hearing, back in the regular session?
A move.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. All right, okay, sir, you may continue.
Thank you. So, our second petition is a variance request. Benjamin Carroll, Jr., owner, has filed a petition for a rear and side yard setback variance on Circle Road, which is on Colonel's Island. It's in the Planting Hammock subdivision. The parcel is further identified as 340D12. Property is .34 acres, more or less, and is zoned R2 for single and two-family dwelling. This parcel is located in District One. Mr. Carroll is requesting that the R2 rear and side setback of 20 feet be reduced to 12 feet to make room to fit a home. The active covenants of Planting Hammock subdivision require a 12-foot minimum rear setback, so we are following those, recommending following those covenants. So, here is a picture of the property as it is, there's nothing on it right now, as well as our legal ad. So, it's, like I said, it's out in the county a bit. I believe this is King's Road.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, yeah, coming down this way, and of course, the Planting Hammock subdivision here on this little island.
Right.
One lane, hard to get on there. So, this is the property in question. I don't know if we could turn off the lights, maybe, if, see the property lines a little better. So, we do want to note that this property is kind of very oddly shaped, and that's why we're making the recommendation we are. You can see a good chunk of it is sort of cut out like that for the pond behind it. It is zoned R2, as I said. So, here's our narrative. Requesting a variance to change the setback off the back of the property line from 20 feet to 12 feet. Written in the Planting Hammock covenant, submitted to Liberty Clerk Office, 11, 2001. Requirements, 12 feet off any recreational area. This piece of property backs up to a community recreational pond. Attached is a drawing showing the request, which I will show you in a moment. Drawing showing adjacent structures, and a copy from the covenants page showing the requirements. So, here is the covenants thing we're speaking about. No building shall be erected on any lot, whether in section A, B, C, D, D1, D2, nearer than 25 feet from Circle Drive, or nearer than 12 feet from any recreational area or side lot line, or nearer than 20 feet from the rear marsh lot line. Kind of a circumventous way of saying it's, for this gentleman here, it's 12 feet on the back and the sides. So, here's a little diagram of what they're planning to do. This would be the structure here. This is an outbuilding that would be planned, and I believe this is a pool over here. Sub, I'm sorry, not a pool. All right, so, yes, this is the 12-foot setback that we are recommending on the back part here and on the side as well. As I said, those are normally 20 in R2 zonings, but due to the strange shape of the lot, we believe there is some sort of a hardship here. There are extraordinary conditions pertaining to this piece of property due to the shape. The parcel is much shallower than other R2 lots due to the pond area and the back being separated. The application of this ordinance to this piece of property would cause a hardship on the owners, as they only would be given 35 feet of depth for the home. Reducing that setback to 12 feet to match the covenants gives them 43 feet to work with, which would lead to a home more closely sized to others in the neighborhood. We do not believe that relief would cause substantial detriment to the public good or to transportation. So, we are recommending approval with standard conditions. Y'all have any questions?
Go back to your covenants there a minute. I just tried to read it real fast.
Sure, sorry about that.
Yeah, those that.
So, basically, the application here is nearer than 12 feet from any recreational area, and the back is classified as a recreational area because it is a pond owned by the Homeowners Association, and then the side lot, or side lot line, which is the other side there.
So, but above that, it says termination of the existing covenant.
Oh, this is, so whenever they sign in new covenant, these are the latest covenants, and they are still active. Whenever they sign in new covenants, they have to repeal the old ones.
So, and that's what we have talked about several times, Joey, with, they've got to be renewed. And these are renewed every time, okay. That's all I had.
Yes, sir.
Well, I couldn't read it fast.
And I believe Ms. Carroll's here, if y'all have any questions for her.
Ms. Carroll? If you'll approach the podium, please, and just tell us your name, and in addition information you want to add to what was presented, we just kind of like to hear from the petitioners themselves sometimes. It's all right to hear from, we consider our staff, our technical staff, but let's just hear from the person who's in the trenches.
I'm Tammy Jo Smith. I'm here to represent Ben Carroll. My parents has lived here, so we're building right from the pond from my parents. Actually, the variance, the people in the community didn't even know what the zoning, you know.
They wouldn't.
What it was until we went through this process and represent. They thought everything was pretty much on the variance, but they are redoing the.
Covenant.
The covenants right now. So, they did ask if, for the new covenants, do we need to incorporate the new, the zoning, or can they leave it as is?
My general guide for you would be it'd be better to take a look at what the zoning requirements are, and try to incorporate those if you could, and I'll yield to kind of the expert there. That way, anybody else that desires to build or do something, it'll be consistent with what the zoning is, and it should be easier for them.
I think they're in the process of rewriting them right now.
Ms. Rick, some of you all serve as a resource for this. Okay, all right, you can contact those two gentlemen. All right, any opposition?
No.
I didn't think so from the way she explained it. District One, sir, we hear from you.
Chairman, I make a motion that we grant the setback as requested.
Motion, the second, we grant the setback as requested, LCPC. Any further discussion on the matter? There being none, all in favor, raise your right hand, please. Setback variance is approved, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioners, y'all have a good night.
Solid waste contract for the city of Flemington.
Yes, sir, you may remember, we started some years ago, providing by contract with Flemington Residential Collection of both household garbage and bulk waste, or dry trash. City of Flemington, currently and up until this year, has basically covered the cost of that contract for its citizens. The citizens own their tax bills, much like others in the county, have been already been billed, but not for the collection piece. They've been billed, as you know, those cost centers are broken out, so they've been paying for actually landfill closure, clean and beautiful, and those other items. The city of Flemington wishes to change that, and they're about to adopt an ordinance that says, basically, we're gonna mandate to the citizens, they've got to have residential collection. We are going to provide that through a contract with an agency, in this case, Liberty County, who will continue to do the same service we've done. And instead of city of Flemington paying us the contract cost, the amount that's on the tax bill will be increased to compensate that cost, and the citizens will pay it through the normal way they've been paying on their tax bills for their property under solid waste. So, that's what this contract lays out, is a contract with Flemington that says that. Couple of quick points there. The initial term is for five years. That's on page two. Early termination is provided, but it would take basically six months to do that. That gives both bodies the chance to basically provide other means, us to regroup, basically, on that loss of revenue to do that. It does specify in there, and there's services provided, you can read that, but basically, it covers single-family dwellings only. And so, multifamily households, trailer parks, commercial businesses have to have their own method of collection, or can contact us about separate collection, but it's not covered in the contract, nor will it be billed to them on the tax bill. They don't currently pay it now.
They don't?
For those type of services. That curbside collection would continue basically like it is now. We pick up one-day curbside household, and another day, curbside, dry trash, bulk waste on there. Under the terms of collection, it just talks about the polycart service being provided, and basically, if a polycart is destroyed or damaged, it's responsibility of the customer to replace that, or, you know, pay the, actually, the cost of that, which is currently how it is in the contract. That has not changed. On page four, it talks about yard waste, gives a limit to the amount of yard waste that can be collected there at 60 pounds. Basically, we don't collect large commercial cleanups, or, let's call it renovations, that happen to homes or stuff like that, that's usually provided by a third party anyway. And so, that would not be provided, but it does put a limit of 60 pounds on there as an average weight. It has a specified means of handling complaints, and this is in the current contract, where if we receive a complaint, we'll let the city know we received the complaint, and they'll do the same coming back to us, and then we resolve those complaints. But it's an effort to keep records, basically, of the complaints that were received, to ensure they get taken care of. But the current contract is that. On page five, the service fee is basically spelled out per calendar year. Again, remember, it's billed on the tax bill and not billed monthly. So, that service fee is $217.92 per year, that the current rate is. And what we have actually done is John Culbertson wrapping up that study that he's doing, we've gone ahead and incorporated his new rate to that. I say his new rate, but the rate that's applicable to the actual cost of providing the services, plus amortization and some overhead. So, this is a current rate. This is really, really up to date.
$217.
$217.92 a year.
For?
For, for two times a week collection, one of household and one for waste, if there's any. So, I didn't.
A year?
A year. So, actually.
For a house?
No, a, a, it's $217.92 per household, per year.
Like a solid waste fee.
That's the solid waste fee. So, it's actually, most people don't pay it like that, and somebody could do this in his head, like Brother Mosley. But it's actually $18.16 a month.
Or to have the garbage picked up.
To have your garbage collected, that curbside, which is very good rate.
Yeah, I mean, what are we paying? I mean, that, that right there is highway robbery.
It is, yeah.
I mean, what we're getting right now in the city, in Heinzville, it's, I mean.
But that's water, too, correct?
Yeah, but excluding the water, we have, we have dry trash picked up, and household garbage picked up.
Well, so, so keep in mind now, this is all-inclusive of all the cost centers, so let me back up a minute. The $217.92 is basically going to include all service costs for solid waste, right? So, inside the city of Heinzville, we're being billed for curbside collection twice a week on these same goods, plus water, plus homeowner fee. It's on there. And then, on our tax bills, we're getting an additional fee each year as a homeowner for landfill closure and clean and beautiful. So, you'd have to add those other two to make it comparable, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I understand that, but the thing is, right now, your household, your rooftops in Flemington have doubled.
Yep.
Since March. I mean, you have doubled it. So, what, when we used to go in there, it'd take one person, a half a day, maybe two and a half hours to do it. a half hours to do it, you're talking about something that's got to be done, it's going to take another truck for sure, and it's going to take another person on, the dry trash truck.
It actually, it actually won't. We, the service will still be run with one truck, both ways. And again, I want to assure you that as recently as the last 60 days, John Colbertson has analyzed all that with the new rooftops. Now, the other thing, though, to keep in mind, and you'll see this in the next section that talks about increases, is we have made the city aware that as those other new homes come on, that there may be annual increases. And so, yes, if we had to increase more times per week, or more, if our costs go out, their cost is going to go up, because we can't lose money on it.
So right now, we're going to be doing it for the same thing we've been doing it for?
No, sir. This is, this is an increase.
How much of an increase? Dollar-wise, that's what I'm talking about.
Hmm, I'll have to, I'll have to, I don't have that figure, but I'll have to get it.
Well, I mean, this is one thing we've talked about in here with, in the finance meeting, is we've got, you know, the, we're paying, you know, employees out there, that's labor, we've got insurance on them, we've got their benefits and all, and then the vehicles, and they're having to come to Flemington when those folks probably may need to be looking at having their own. I mean, you're going to have growth in our unincorporated areas, and we know that right now, so, you know, that's all we can do is continue on, but, you know, right now, it's Clint's talking about, we've got a truck down, and what have we just replaced at the landfill down there, or the convenience centers and all of his floors and stuff like that. I just hope that we're, let's make sure we're...
We are.
Because I think if you can do it that cheap, then you can probably do it that cheap in the city of Hinesville.
No, I don't know. I want to assure you that we have analyzed it down to the amortization on the vehicles and the five-year capital plan on the vehicles, everything. Keep in mind, too, that the solid waste fund, unlike the general fund, has to be self-sustaining. And so it sits out there separate, there's a total separate budget done, and John is due in here actually in December to show you that in depth. I will make sure that ahead of that, you get that in-depth report, because what you're going to see is every cost doing those services broken out, plus overhead, labor, future cost of equipment, everything is rolled into that. And so, yes, sir, I feel real good that that's a very accurate rate.
You comfortable?
Because it was just done. If it had been four years since we had done the rate, I would have my doubts.
This is with the same amount of employees?
Same amount of employees, at least right now.
And that's what I'm saying, we're saying at least right now.
No, no, again, and so every year, we analyze that. We have to add another truck, another truck now, not if we have to replace one, because replacement's already built in, the amortization schedule over a five-year period is in this rate, okay? And that's something we don't do in the general fund. It's not that definitive, but in the solid waste fund, it is, and it's that same with the water fund. But if we have to add another employee to the route, if we have to double the route, if we have to put on a second truck, the next year, we're going to up that rate for whatever that is called star, and that's the reason we built that in here.
I'm just, I'm, you know, I'm...
Sounding the alarm.
Understand.
You know what?
Sounding the alarm.
We are. We're picking it up now, and this...
I'm just a little concerned about...
Yes, sir.
In the garbage and the dry trash?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
I mean, I just don't think that there's, we're not figuring on a lot of it in there, and we're talking about doing...
Think Hinesville can pick it up for that rate?
I don't think so. I don't think they can. I don't think they will. I mean, we've got the fellow right here that can tell us, I can tell you what my building...
I'm the fellow that picks it up. I don't do the charging now.
I know that.
I don't know where, I don't know where the city get that price from, but we pick it up. But Joey, that is something to think about, the, we can, with all the growth in Flemington, behind the former art center and what's going down on the, I guess on the other side past Mike Reedon up in all those houses.
Right.
That we can go in there with our existing staff and provide that service today for all the new houses, even off of Old Sunberry Road, which is, I think, Old Savannah Road, all that down there, behind the, and what Flemington already has.
Right. It doesn't take us a full day to do Flemington now.
Okay.
All the, all, it doesn't take us, it doesn't take us a full day to do that.
Why not do it countywide? That's all we charge.
Well, and that was one, that was the one thing that, you know...
I was led to believe it was going to be $30, $40 a month, but you're saying that sixteen, eighteen...
Eighteen, sixteen a month. It's basically what it is. For now, anyway.
If you buy them...
Just let me do this. Let me get Colbertson to come in. We got to adopt this before the end of the year.
He's coming in December.
So let's get Colbertson to come in, so you can see it on the paper.
Got you.
That's all I ask. So that is what the contract provides, and it does, it does have a way to basically do that increase per year, if necessary, to do that. Now, keep in mind, if our tipping fee changes, if anything changes, not just if we add another staff or anything, but if any of our cost changes, everybody's going to change, including the city residents.
Well, I mean, Colbertson, who is this Colbertson? I mean, what are you talking about?
He's done, he's done your study for about 10 years.
Well, I mean, let's also get Clint in here, because my thing about it is, is if we're going to be spending a little bit more time in Flemington...
Yes, sir.
Guess what's going to happen on Christmas Day?
Yes, sir.
That has never happened.
Correct. So the way Colbertson does...
I mean, they pick up in Hinesville, if it's Christmas Day, they're going to move.
Yes, so the way he does the study is that Johnny, Clinton, Kathy, Kim, from the financial sense, and Clinton and Johnny from the operational sense, all meet with him to talk about current status, number of households that have been added in the county, where they've been added, where the convenience centers are, where we're providing curbside, if that needs to increase, if landfill closure needs to increase, so they're all involved in that process.
It's comprehensive.
It's a very comprehensive process, but...
I think we should be looking at countywide. We're probably one of the last counties who don't have countywide pickup.
Well, and you talked about doing countywide.
We talked about maybe five or six years ago or longer, but I think we need to take another look at it.
So if you remember, Colbertson actually did that study for y'all, came back with a rate, but it was also right there on the heels of needing to choose between increasing a rate for fire protection and putting full-time people on, or doing the, or doing the polycart, and you said, we've got to take care of the fire, and then we can look at the polycart.
Now, we have taken care of fire, so I think we need to look at countywide. We are behind the bar.
Let's remember this, though. Let's remember that we are talking about a separate municipality, okay? We're not talking about what Kim pushed up there, the unincorporated areas. Those areas, that's already a municipality with a charter and a mayor and a bunch of council seats, I mean, we need to think about those. I mean, they want to use our landfill, they've got every right to, because they're being taxed, but the thing about it is, is picking it up, I mean...
Yeah, we just, we've been picking it up.
The same way with the ditches and everything else.
We've been picking it up for them for five years, I just didn't anticipate there was a problem with continuing the contract.
Not that many.
But if so, I need to know, so we can back up and regroup and let Flemington know they'll need to find another service provider, which is fine, too. I mean, I don't know that we've got a burning desire to do it. It does help accumulate some funds for us, but totally up to the commission.
It did at that time, because they were paying contract, but we put it back on a tax bill now. So, you know...
Yeah, they're mandating their citizens to use it, basically.
They're mandating, but...
Right. But I mean, that's a good point.
Do they march them up here to pay it?
Well, that's true. I mean, it'll require them to pay it. Their ordinance will require them to pay it, is what it'll be. But again, because it has to go out on the tax bills, basically, if there's going to be a change, it has to appear on the notices that go out.
Right.
So it would need to be changed and adopted by January 1st to affect those notices.
And, you know, here it is, November, and we're talking about something that we should have been talking about in January of this year, but I mean, you know, things like this, if they're, if they're that big a rush, I understand, but whenever we can, and we, if we need to start assessing it immediately, let's assess it immediately. I'm talking about the whole ball of wax, the road department and what we're doing in the smaller municipalities, I understand that their, their hands are tied in a lot of things, and we don't mind helping them, but, you know, I'm, I would love to see 100% rollback for people that are in my district, just like Commissioner Fraser would and some of others, but, you know, we've got to try to make this machine work, and I'm willing to make it work, but I can tell you, let's, let's have a real long, hard talk with them and let them know, I mean, it's, it's all about a dollar. I mean, that's, that's what it is.
And the millage rate that you looked at tonight, she didn't mention that is 100% rollback for the city residents, by the way.
I think she said it was 96, is it right?
No, 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 it's 96% collection, but it's 100% rollback for sure.
As long as it's 100%, we're fine.
Yes, sir, sir.
But it's, so, it still needs to be about 100.
This is, this is not a money-losing...
No, sir.
Yeah.
No, sir. But I, you know, also, and I share Commissioner Walden's concern, the city of Walta, the city of Flemington talked to us about this, and talked about actually doing it last year, and then basically came back and said, we want to do it, what's the timing? And that's just been recently. So, I mean, I'm not suggesting you don't do the contract, or that you don't go through with it this year, but that's certainly up to the commission.
Well, we hear the report in December, and it gets all of our questions answered, and we've reached that level of confidence.
Would that give it enough time to get it on the tax bill?
Yes, so that's the reason it has to be done by then.
And then we need to look at countywide, like, Mr. Walden, starting January 21, we need to look at countywide possibly.
That's, because that is a good rate.
Yeah.
That's a very good rate.
When we, when we say countywide, let's make sure we're saying unincorporated. I mean, I know that, everybody needs to have, you know, you can't treat everybody the same, because they won't let you, but we can be fair with them all, so...
If not, we're going to have to look at expanding, enlarging our convenience centers.
Yes, ma'am, but we're already, that's the reason he hasn't come to you with that report, because if you remember, about 30 days ago, we talked about that, and so we sent him back out, we've had two more meetings this month on that, to look at the convenience center expansions, and those are coming to you along with his report now. In fact, we're going to show you on a map in the next meeting how we propose to do that in the five-year plan.
Okay.
Just one question, Mr. Chairman. Joey, and I know we, this is about solid waste, but there are some things in here. So would there be like an enforcement, like a code enforcement? Who would handle that? Let's say like, would Clinton them at this transfer station handle complaints? We've got something here that says that we won't pick up yard waste if it weighs over 60 pounds, and then it's got like polycart contents. You know, Hinesville has a code enforcement department, like if we, tomorrow, we leave a pile of trash, code enforcement would tell the people, well, they left it because of this, because you got a lot of, you remodel your whole house, and we don't pick that up. So my guys would miss it, and code enforcement would tell them, that's why, you know, that you'd be responsible for doing that. Who would handle those kind of calls if we're the service provider, Clinton and his guys, and the guy with the garbage truck rides by and say, well, you know, that's out of bounds? Who handles those calls?
So the city of Flemington has to adopt a companion ordinance, in fact, it's mentioned in here, on solid waste, and part of that will be to tell those people in the city that you can't do certain things, and so the short answer to your question is Flemington would enforce it through their code. We would not enforce the Flemington code. And they have a police officer there, sheriff, actually, that can do that, so it would go to municipal court.
And they only have one of those, right?
Yes, sir.
Well, they don't have a code down there. They don't have a code in Flemington.
Yeah, they have a code, they have a code of ordinances already that they're enforcing down there.
Who enforces them?
They do. We don't enforce them.
The deputy that's down there?
Yeah, we don't enforce them. They go to their court, they have a municipal court judge.
Flemington has a court?
Mm-hmm. They're enforcing their own.
All right, we'll look forward to the information in December.
When is it coming, Joey?
We just got him the information on the convenience centers last week, as a matter of fact, so I would anticipate he'd be here first meeting in December, is, I think, in fact, we've already got him calendared for the first meeting.
And we need to make a decision shortly.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, historical cultural grants.
Yes, sir, we took applications for those. As you know, we were able to do a dispersment the first time for that. We actually had, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight submittals, and you see that on the sheet that I provided for you there. When we reviewed those, when the committee reviewed those, basically, there was some material that was proposed that is not applicable to be done with special purpose sales tax, i.e. brochures or promotional material. It can only be used for capital investment or capital improvements. And so that being said, basically, you see the eight there, you see basically what they're eligible for, and it's the committee's recommendation that we go ahead and honor those eligible activities as submitted by those agencies. One side note to that, you probably remember that Dorchester Improvement Association was also granted an automatic allotment out of the tax, and so they did not apply this time, but they're going to make applications separate. Once we give these out, this will end, at least for collection now, unless the tax collects more than 54 million, it will end those allocations to those external agencies other than Dorchester Improvement. So basically, anything that's left, unless it exceeds the 54, will go to Dorchester.
Okay, committee members.
That's the recommendation.
Yeah. Committee members, we discussed this. Committee members, anything you want to add?
Mr. Chair, do we want to do the presentation to them as we did the last time?
We want to schedule a...
We can.
Okay.
I'd like to go ahead if we can, if it's okay, and if it's, if it's the worst pleasure to go ahead and approve that, then we can notify them, they've been approved, we can have the amount printed up. I think we did some CDBG-type checks last time.
We did.
Those who like that, and we had them come up.
Okay, all right. Chair, entertain the motion.
Chair, make that motion that we grant to those who applied under the historical culture, the amount of funding that was requested.
That's on this sheet for you. Second?
Second.
What's your second? Any further discussion?
I just have a question. And this will deplete all the funds for this, correct?
It will deplete all the funds, except those remaining dedicated to Dorchester.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So, in other words, no one else will be able to apply?
That's correct.
Okay.
Unless we have some overage...
That's right.
Down the line.
All right. Because these are the same ones that applied last year.
That's your difference.
Um, there may be...
I know the chamber, I know CBG.
Yes, sir. The majority are.
Right.
Glenn Bryant is the same as HDDA?
Um, no, sir. Separate.
Separate, okay.
And Glenn Bryant and DDA did apply the last couple.
No DDA did.
I think they're all the same ones that have applied traditionally.
Right. Okay.
I just... Mr. Chairman, now, Joey, you said if there's some overages, it'd go to Dorchester.
Well, no, sir, no, sir. The remainder of the funds in there now, that we will collect up to the $54 million, will go to Dorchester. Okay? If anything's collected above 54, then it would be applicably split between Dorchester's percentage that it got out of the original, and then there might be some extra for the other agencies.
For somebody, for some of these agencies?
Or someone else to apply.
For someone else to apply, or these agencies to apply.
Because actually, we had one agency that did not apply this time. Because actually, we had one agency that did not apply this time.
Yeah, we opened it up again for around...
Okay.
Yeah, I, I was just wondering how the application process is done, but we can talk about it later.
And real quickly, I was going to say that. We send out a letter. We advertise in the newspaper and on Facebook for the application process, and we resend to every agency that's ever gotten it.
Okay.
Even those that didn't apply got a letter that were notifying them it was open.
Okay. I, I was just wanting to make sure that all eligible.
As much as humanly possible.
Yeah.
All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Sorry. Thank you, sir. Bids, generator road department.
Mr. Chair, and the members of the board, a bid was developed and submitted to a number of vendors for a new generator to be placed at the Liberty County Public Works Facility. The county received bids from four vendors, and those vendors were Current Edge Solutions, Ellis Smith Electrical Company, RDC Construction, and TAW Power System. Those bids range as low as forty-three thousand to as much as a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Wow. You may as well go ahead and explain that.
So we, we looked at the low bid coming from Current Edge. We interviewed about, we asked them to provide us a reference, and we contacted all of the people, all of their contacts. About six to seven of them responded, and all spoke very highly of Current Edge Solutions. And they worded the low bidder at forty-three thousand dollars. The county does have a grant through FEMA, and it's a seventy-five, twenty-five percent, and I think that amount was seventy-five thousand. So we're going to come way under the amount allocated by FEMA.
Everybody priced it on the same specs. Did we put specs out there?
Yes, sir.
How did he come up with a hundred?
Right. Where'd the one-twenty come from?
Not sure what happened with that. The, the other, the other three are in the ballpark, though. That one...
Yeah.
Again, the estimate was somewhere around sixty-five to seventy-five. And now, keep in mind, too, what happens a lot, I'll be real quick, is that, remember, anything that's projected to be over a hundred thousand dollars, including this, I mean, we put it out there, we put it on the state procurement website. So what we, what we started to get now are agencies out of the Atlanta area and nationwide that will come in and put bids in. And, and at least that's one thing I think we're seeing.
Yeah.
So I don't know whether, I'm not sure about that one.
So you're telling me in Atlanta, you, you could sell a generator?
No, I'm not saying necessarily Atlanta, but, but I'm saying, there are people, there are people that are not in our region now, that are, you know, we're seeing all kind of pricing from them.
Man, I'm in the wrong business.
And you said this is for the road department?
It is, yes, sir. It replaces out, and turnkey job includes transfer switch installation and hookup and running. The only thing we got to do, in fact, it includes removal of the old generator, placement on the yard. The only thing we got to do is, is gas it, basically.
Mr. Brown, you know that we are in the process of replacing the facility, right?
Right.
Well, how is this going to play, in effect, with the new generator to the old building?
Well, what we'll, what we'll do is basically just pick this up and move it, is what we'll do. I mean, we don't have any choice. It's going to be put on a pad anyway, and so, in fact, a pad's going to be built up. I didn't mention that, I didn't mention that. But it'd be built up to prevent flooding, and so we'll, we'll have to pick it up and move it. Because we're, you know, at the best, we're two years away from, and we can't wait because of the grant.
Okay. Chairman, take the motion.
No move. I make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Second. Motion is second. We approve the bid presented, forty-three grand from Current Edge Solutions. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Motion passes.
Are, are, are we going to send, send a letter to the ones who...
We do.
Let them know?
We do.
Send one to Mr. Harold Ellis.
Yeah.
Got to be.
All right. Adam, eight, D, board appointments. Committee, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Y'all ready?
Yeah, man.
All right. Close to the end of the year, man.
All we got to have is the list. Be ready.
All right, proceed, sir.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the committee met, and by unanimous decision, the first appointment is the CAGDA board. There's one position available, and Mr. Brian Smith wants to be reappointed, and that's our recommendation.
Okay. Chairman, take the motion.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Mr. Smith back to the CATA board.
Do you have a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion is second. We reappoint Mr. Brian Smith to the CATA board. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand.
Is that that board that, that we have to send, send a recommendation, and they got to approve it? Something like the hospital? That's not that one?
CATA didn't work them.
The hospital is on here, though.
Mm-hmm. Next.
Okay, the Development Authority, we have one position, we have one applicant, and Mr. Al Williams wants to be reappointed, and that's our recommendation, Mr. Chairman.
Somebody make that motion, please.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we looked closely on Mr. Williams and made sure that his attendance was good, and his attendance is good, so I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint him.
Do you have a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion is second. Reappoint Mr. Al Williams. He does attend, if not in person, he does teleconference, and he'll do that. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Mr. Williams, reappoint. Hospital authority.
Uh, Mr. Frazier, this is the hospital authority.
There we go. Let me see.
On the hospital authority, we have two positions, and we have two applicants, both wanting to be reappointed, Mr. Reggie Pierce and Mrs. Daisy Prey. And our recommendation is that we reappoint both of those.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion.
Is second?
Second.
Motion is second. Reappoint Mr. Pierce and Mrs. Prey. Those were the only two applicants for those?
Yeah, just only two. Now, don't...
You gotta say three names, right?
So, so actually, you're supposed to submit three names. We've, we've only submitted two in the past, because that's all we've got.
That's all we got.
And so what, what we'll have to do, you can't submit them in priority order.
Right.
So we actually had this come up before. We'll submit, one, one place, we'll have Pierce first and Prey second.
Right.
We'll have Prey first and Pierce second.
I believe, I believe that was, if it's a new appointment.
No, sir, it's on the reappointments, too. You're, yes, sir, really, you are. You're, the, the bylaws call for three to be submitted.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor of that recommendation, raise your right hand, please. All right, we will do that in that order. Next, sir.
Public health board, Mr. Chairman, we have one applicant, Ms. Peggy McGee. She wants to be reappointed, and that's our recommendation.
Okay. Someone turn that into a motion, please.
Some move.
Second.
Okay.
Motion is second. We have Ms. Peggy McGee. She does a fine job for us.
She does. Thank you.
She's diligent. Reappointed to the public health boards. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Reappoint Ms. Peggy McGee. You'll have to meet her sometime. You'd be impressed.
Yes, sir.
I, I just want to tell Commissioner Gillard, Walden, and all of them, y'all did a wonderful job on those board appointments.
We were the best thing happening in twenty-twenty.
We're, we're taking notes. We're taking notes. I don't need that note.
Secretariat?
You might. I don't.
No, sir, that shouldn't, that, that should not have been on there. I, I did have something that the Recreation Department Director called me about, actually yesterday, to ask about basketball. It's time to start taking applications for basketball season. Normally, he takes the applications first, first part of November, and that season starts in December. I would tell you already, there's a challenge, because we've had to postpone the air conditioner replacement in the Schuman Center because of election voting being there. So November, first part of December, would not have any activity in that facility anyway, because that job's got to be complete. We had to postpone it. So, again, I guess the question is, in a, even a postponed season right now, trying to figure out about putting people in the gymnasium. I, I would tell you the conversation he and I had, while we love the sport, managing that in an enclosed environment would be very, very difficult in the size of facility we got.
We, we shut them down on the outside. There's no way we could put them inside.
Inside, no.
Be very difficult. So he wanted to entertain the board's thoughts on that, or to have you think about that, so we can talk about it later.
Well, I would, I mean, you heard the, kind of, it's a consensus, let him, him come to our next meeting. I, I kind of agree, and I know, I guess it's public, that Bradwell has had some exposures already with some of their basketball players, so... And of course, you know, other places on all levels have, so...
The managing the players probably is not as difficult, on the timing sequence, as it would be controlling the crowd and distancing in a closed facility, with no more seating than we have.
At one time, he told us, too, that the, because he normally uses some of the school gyms.
Right.
And that had been a concern. I'm not sure if that's cleared up or not.
Has not been, but I'll ask him to come to the, to the next meeting.
Okay. We'll bring him out next morning, okay? We don't want to be Scrooge, but...
I know, and, and also, can he come with, I guess, looking forward to, you know, maybe